I call the meeting to order the special, the call the special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to be ordered today at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad?
Present.
Moby Dune?
Here.
Nancy Breyer?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here.
Hassan Saab is absent. Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Council Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you so much. All right, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna have Vince lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance today.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All may be seated. Thank you, Vince. Next up, we have the Agenda Approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amended agenda for the special meeting of December 17, 2024 as submitted with the adjustment that the items will be considered in the following order. Item 15A, closed session, Hashem versus Dearborn Heights. Item 9A, American Rescue Plan, ARPA Premium Payment. Item 7- A, bid award, drinking water state revolving fund, 2024 water main replacement change order number one, American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is closed session, moving to a closed session, legal case of Hashem versus Dearborn Heights.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council move to a closed session at 6:02 PM so the city council may discuss the legal case of Hashem versus the City of Dearborn Heights, which may include the city council, Mayor Bezzi, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Corporation Council, and Carlito Young of Rosari Schultz.
Juppick.
Juppick and...
Am Spiller.
And what?
Am Spiller.
Am Spiller.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Constant, the Honorable. Any discussion?
Uh, I think you gotta take a roll call here.
Yep. Hassan Ahmad?
Here, uh, yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab is absent, and Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I also want to, just for the record, that Councilman, um, Constant will also be abstaining on that vote, so please adjust that.
I'll be in the meeting.
You are gonna be in the meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I did not know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Underway.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now back out of our closed session. Councilwoman, are you good to go?
Yes.
Councilman?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council return to an open session at 6:52 PM.
All right, motion made by Councilman Ahmad.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have a placeholder for the recommended motion. Would anybody like to...
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council to go with the recommendation of, um, Carlito Young of Rosari Schultz, uh, Juppick, and Am Spiller.
(inaudible).
And, in the case of, uh, in the legal case of Hashem versus the City of Dearborn Heights.
With the settlement amount?
Just to go with the recommendation.
We don't say the amount.
Well, you don't have to say.
No, no.
You don't, guys, I, I know, thank you. I'm not saying we're saying it amount, we're saying with the amount that they've, we have agreed on.
The recommended.
With the recommended amount that they've agreed on, just so that George can write that in there, uh, obviously no number was given.
Okay.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Constant.
Yeah.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes.
None.
None. We have public hearings and public comments on agenda items only or from the public on anything they'd like to speak.
Sure.
Please, I believe this gentleman asked for an additional minute.
So three minutes.
Mohamed Saad Cornell since, uh, June of, uh, this year, and 25/6/20 Vanborn for renewal the business license. I know I went in for, uh, council last time, I think it was not approved, so I'm here just to speak about it.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Okay.
Is it on? Is the green light on?
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
Just come closer to it. Go ahead.
So, as you may all know, when I first got the property was, uh...
Raise your voice a little bit.
Uh, the, the, since I got the property last year, or two years ago, uh, the dealer was in the small office, and I acquired the whole property, which is 13,000 square foot. I did submit my plans to remodel the whole building, and I'll be moving the small office to the new building, and I was approved for, uh, also as a collision shop as well. So the limit for the small office was 12 cars, I believe, you know, for the previous dealer. And, uh, I know at some point we went over 12, but I was hoping the remodeling will finish sooner than, you know, I anticipated, but it went longer, so we, here and there, we, uh, acquired more than 12 cars, or, you know, I mean, it's like almost, uh, 1.7 acre property. So, basically, based on this, I was hoping you guys reinstated my license or, my business license, or, or renew it for me, so.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Mr. Saad, you said you just got approved for a collision shop?
Oh, I was approved.
When, when did you get approved?
Last year. My plans were approved last year.
Last year?
Yeah. Before I, I, we went over the dealer issue, so.
And how long before the remodeling takes place?
I'm almost done, I'm, I finished the, almost the outside, uh, I'm hoping to finish in the next two months, you know.
And how many cars do you think you have in the lot right now?
I have about, uh, 30 on the outside lot. Uh, as, I mean, this is an ongoing business, you know, I cannot just, you know, I mean, we, we have customers coming, you know, every day, you know, leave a car, take a car for a test drive, but we had more than 20, 30 cars, you know, basically, so. I mean, I, I'm saying, I, I'm not denying, I, we did violate the terms, you know, at one point, but I was hoping after I finished the remodeling, you know, I will come in and represent it, you know, for, you know, I mean, for more cars to be displayed outside. So, that's basically where I'm at.
I mean, this is, just, Mr. Saad, uh, it's double, double the amount of cars that were allowed, so I know when you were allowed 12 cars and now it's...
As I said, yeah, I mean, the, the, the small, the, the old dealer was, only was occupying like 400, 500 square foot, which is the office, current office now, and as, as I said, the building is 13,000 square foot, uh, to, I mean, and almost like 1.7 acre, the whole property.
No, I totally understand, and good for you, and I wish you best of luck, but for the time being, I know the neighbors, they're not happy with having all these cars.
I don't, you know, I don't have a neighbors, I only have one neighbor, uh, there's no residential, I, I have the creek between me and the neighbor, between me and the flooded area, so, I mean, so.
Neighbors, the businesses.
I mean, I, I had a lot of walk-ins from the ne, from the back neighbors, they offered help when I, when I first walked into the, you know, property, they offered help, they did really help me cleaning, because they, they, they were complaining about homeless living in there, people, you know, driving there, having parties at night, you know, back there. Since I moved in, you know, I mean, even few, few, few residents, you know, approached me for, you know, work, as I, and I told them after I finished, probably be offering them work, so.
I mean, since it's gonna take some time for the rehab to be done, can you take those cars down to a reasonable number?
I, I am trying to minimize them as much as I can, you know, and I'm trying to keep it to 12 displayed, so, you know, I, I had to go rent a warehouse actually to move those out of there, so, that's where I'm at now. And, I mean, I mean, I'm hoping you wish me, I mean, it turned out to be a good year for us, to be honest with you, we weren't, you know, we almost been there a year, and we did not anticipate to have that many, you know, customers, to be honest with you, I mean, for a new, new business, so, it turned out to be a good year for us, I mean, and...
So Dearborn Heights been good to you?
It's been good to Dearborn Heights. I mean, no complaints, so, I mean, that's why, you know, I, I bought a house, and, uh, my brother moved in since he fled Lebanon last year, so.
God bless, God bless.
He's living there now, I let him live in there, so.
You know, I, I will say, and I spoke with the gentleman today, and I appreciate you coming in here.
Thank you.
And I was very firm, and I told this to Mr. Saad, you came to this chambers, you said, "I will not have more than 12," and he helped me out with this business license, the way the, the whole transaction happened, even though it was something that was very hard on us to even approve, because we have all said this. But let me, let me finish, let me finish. We have all said here, no more car dealership, used car dealerships on the south end of Dearborn Heights, especially on Vanborn. This was, between the way the clerk and, and the, uh, Mr. Whittling from our building in engineering, and the way this was all played out, we said, "Okay, but we ask you, no more than 12 stacked vehicles," and you gave us your word, but now you're coming before us and saying, "Well, hey, I have 30," you know, right before renewal, you can see the frustration between this body and why we're saying, you know, I can tell you almost, I think every council member here has driven past it and said, and respectfully, Mr. Saad, it looks like crap.
I, I mean, I don't...
It just does not look, it's an eyesore.
I don't understand why you call it crap, I mean, it's a car dealer, so I mean...
I'm not saying, you're not understanding, what I'm saying is, nobody driving down the road wants to see a bunch of used cars sold, we, we are trying to get away from that, and so when I say it looks like crap, yeah, it does not look like a, a business where I'm driving through in a neighborhood where I say, "Hey, this is the neighborhood that I wanna live in," because, and the reality is, car dealers become an eyesore.
There's no neighborhood in there, that's what I'm saying, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, okay, a block or two down, it isn't, it's still in the neighborhood.
Set an image.
And, as I said, I had a lot of, I had a lot of good comments from the people in the back, you know, you know, for, you know, remodeling the building, improving the area, and bringing business to that area, to be honest with you, because you, I mean, as you drive by Vanborn, you see a lot of closed businesses in there, even, I mean, from Taylor side and Dearborn Heights side, so, I mean, I would...
I, I just thought...
I thought you would appreciate my business, you know, moving in there, you know, and investing, investing in the city, so, that's, uh...
And we do, we really do, and let me tell you, Dearborn Heights is in the up and coming, and you just said it, you did not anticipate that type of business. The reality is, Dearborn Heights, like I said, is, it's in the up and coming, the agreement between you and here without anything on paper but a handshake deal, a verbal deal was, "I'm only gonna have 12 vehicles."
Yeah, that's...
"I'm gonna put, I'm gonna make a nice facade, I'm gonna make it look good, I'm gonna make it look presentable, here we got 30 cars stacked."
That's for the, like, for, that's, that's for the small office, like 500, 400, 500 square foot, and what I'm saying is, I haven't finished my remodeling for the 13,000 square foot, I'm almost there, so, that's, you know...
Thank you, Councilor Chair, I mean, basically what Councilor Chair was saying, you had a lot that fits 12 cars, and you're trying to pull 30 cars, that's why it doesn't look good, but now you're telling me, I know you're modeling the 13,000 square feet, but that's in the future, doesn't give you the right...
The parking lot takes like almost 70 cars, you know, that's the outside parking lot. For some reason, you know, the old dealer, they limited him for 12 because he was using the 12, you know, only selling like 12 cars, whatever, you know, his, his situation was, so...
Is Rick here?
Yeah.
Is Rick on?
I don't see him.
Um...
Hassan Saab is the same.
I see that, Councilman.
Yeah.
Council Chair?
He might have to...
Yes, I'm gonna run Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things is, uh, uh, you said you were approved for auto repair.
A collision.
I think just your site plan was approved, was it?
Yeah.
License, license was approved too?
Uh, for the collision?
Yeah.
The site plan was approved.
The site plan, not the new license for a collision.
The license will come in after I get the CBO, whatever.
So, yeah, so you don't have a license for a collision shop?
No, no, I'm not doing collision or anything, so...
Yeah, so, he's building, and, um, I'm all for businesses, we need the business for our tax base, obviously.
Thank you.
But, when I went there, the first time I went there, there were several car, you know, dozens of cars with no license plates on them.
Yeah.
And, uh, behind the fence were several cars torn apart, they're tearing apart, sell, like, sell parts. Now, that's not a used car sales.
No.
It's a junkyard.
That's a junkyard.
No, we get cars, we get cars, you know, use, use parts of them for the one we sell.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's something else besides used car sales, I think, I don't know if that classifies as used car sales, if you can take cars and strip them down and sell parts, that's an auto, auto parts dealership.
I do not, I do not strip cars, you know, I have another property down, across the road in Romulus, that's where my, uh, yard is for, uh, stripping cars, but I do not strip cars in there.
And there's also selling vehicles out of the property across the street from, uh...
That's my property.
Yeah, I know, so that's a different property, and is that...
Janet, Janet split my property, you know, so that's my property.
Yeah, that's a separate part property, it was originally VFW Hall, and that was a screen repair shop.
Yes.
Yeah.
The screen is, uh, not mine, but the, the parking lot is mine.
Parking lot there, yeah.
The parking lot is part of my property.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's...
Part of my plan that was approved, so.
I, when I went by there, I, I counted 14 cars in that screen shop parking lot.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It comes, uh, you, you probably need to revisit the site plan for that, it, my, uh, the screen, my property comes behind the screen, uh, shop.
Yeah, but there were, you, you were, you had a lot of cars there, and there was, there were several without license plates in there.
Yeah, I mean, those are cars for sale, so, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And, the, the fencing that you're using is, I mean, I don't wanna keep picking on you, but it's like the cheapest plastic fence you can buy.
Vinyl.
Vinyl fence there.
What do you, what kind of, I mean...
I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's, 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 you know, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm just stating the fact, like, it's like if someone wants to go buy the cheapest fence they can get, they, that's what they would buy, and that fence, if, if that's the case, I talk to people that live across the creek, especially now that the, all the leaves are off the trees, they're looking right into that parking lot, and before, they said they looked into a parking lot where VFW Hall was there, well-maintained, well-maintained building, now they're looking at torn apart cars.
No, there's, there's fence all, all around, there's no, there's fence all around.
Yeah, but they still...
I have a shadow, I have a shadow box all the way on the creek.
But with the elevation, they can see in, into that, into your yard.
It's a six-foot, it's a six-foot fence.
I know, I'm just telling you what they, what they, they tell me, and they can smell oil, they say, for some reason.
Probably from the gas station down the road, or, I mean...
So, we, you know, I mean, I mean, look, hang on for a second, you know, the badgering of the, of the fence and how the fence looks cheap or not, that's not our role to discuss. Well, I'm just saying, saying the point. I know, but that's between, that's the building... You said it was an eyesore. Yeah. I'm just telling you what... I, I understand, but I mean, the, the, but you're here discussing saying you didn't put an expensive enough fence.
What kind of fence should be recommended?
I don't know. That's between the building and engineering and them.
They approved, they, when I, when I went into, for the fence permit, uh, I, I, you know, I mean, you want me to put a steel fence? I mean, I thought vinyl would be more, uh, nicer looking, to be honest with you.
Well, the fence on the property line...
Or shadow box, I don't know.
Along the creek, that fence, I'm talking right where you come in between the building and your lot, that, there's that fenced area right there, that's, it looks, it looks, it doesn't, it doesn't look really, I mean, it doesn't look nice.
To be honest, this is the first time I would, I would hear, I, you know, I would hear like the vinyl fence is cheap, I mean, it cost me like $10,000 for the fencing, I mean, I, I did not see any other, any better options than the vinyl option, uh, vinyls. I did not pick them white, so they don't, they don't get dirty, I picked them like, uh, the brownish color, yeah, and so I thought that will at least, I thought they would look nice, I mean, everybody recommended those fences, I don't know, I mean, that's something else, I mean, but, uh...
Yeah, I know.
I was approved for, to, to, to put a fence, I put, it cost me like 10, 15,000 dollars for the fence, all around, I mean, I'm investing, you know, I'm not just playing games here and there, you know, so, uh, that's, you know...
Well...
All, all in the back, it's, uh, shadow box, uh, by, you know, behind, behind the building, you know, I mean, the building, you know, I mean, it's a six-foot, you know, it's taller than me, so...
I want you to know, your, your time is up here, three minutes, I'm gonna, the last question will be asked by our Councilwoman, I'm gonna have you be seated.
Well, I guess, I guess the bottom line is, is we gave him a license with restrictions, and he's ignoring them, that's the bottom line, he's not even giving us credibility.
It's not ignoring, you know, it, I mean, as I said...
You got too many cars.
It was, okay, as I said, you know, it's like, it's like a grocery store, you have more customers, I mean...
Just turn away, because you know your limits.
That, you know, the limit is, as I said, it was for the small office, 500 square foot office, but the parking lot fits like 70, 80 outside, and inside I have 70, 80, I'm not having that many cars for sale outside, you know, okay, so, I mean, I'm telling you, I'll be, I, I did downsize them today.
How mu, how many more cars when a collision shop opens?
I don't...
Right, 30 now, I mean, we had a, like...
I did, I did move them too, so as, as I said earlier, I did rent, had to go rent out of a warehouse to put my cars in there, so, not too far from the, you know...
Well, look, there's nothing about your collision shop on today's agenda, I let you speak, and I kinda wanted you to come here before the next city council meeting, it will be up for renewal on the 14th, um, look, the reality is, the body here has made it very firm, I'm not caring about the fencing and all that, comes back down to, you have 12 cars, if you have more than 12 cars...
If you go down, if you go down tomorrow, you'll have, you'll see the 12 cars over there, so, as I said, I did minimize them, so, I mean, so...
Okay, council members, please.
I mean...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience?
Uh-oh. Here comes trouble.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Great, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Once again, I'm going to sound like a broken record about blight.
Merry Christmas, by the way.
Merry Christmas. Anyways, Warren and Inxter, again, we've gotten rid of our mattress, and now we've inherited a playpen full of garbage. On the way home from work today, I have been in contact with our DPW department, supposedly they're gonna get in contact with John, called our ordinance department, totally disgusted when I talked to our ordinance department about everything that's going on within the city, and how they are trying to issue warnings and get things through courts, and a lot of tickets, people are being ordered to pay non-compliance fees. So what a non-compliance fee means, they pay the city money, and they don't have to fix the issue. So what good is having an ordinance department that's going out there trying to do a job, trying to make the city better, when we have a court system that sucks, and I'll use that word, sucks? You guys, as a council, need to get together and come up with something, or we need to come up with some kind of new rules, or something about people in blight, grass, snow removal, the neighbor next door to me, which is a rental house on one side, an Airbnb on the other side of me, I'm having a fun time. The rental house next door to me, the leaves haven't been raked, all, awful, awful.
Go crazy.
We have no ordinance against leaves, why not? I have to go out and re-clean my house.
I think we do, I think we do.
Yeah, no, don't put them in the street, just leave them so your neighbors can pick them up then. I'm tired of sweeping the streets, I'm not Dearborn Heights city sweeper. I'm gonna start sending the city a check for all the stuff I have to clean that I should be getting, taking care of with my tax dollars. This is ridiculous. Then I still have the Airbnb on the other side of me, which we still can't come up with, what are we doing about Airbnbs?
We're waiting on the New Year to come in, I had a conversation with Roger, I actually spoke to him about it yesterday, and said, "Andrew's gonna come up here in January," and here we are, still in December.
Well, no, and I, the last person that rented for me was there for five days, chain smoker, all my beautiful Christmas decorations, do you know I have a manger, everything out there, display out there? All his cigarette butts are tossed on my lawn, and guess who's gotta go pick them up out of our Christmas decorations? Me. Not the person who owns the house and is making $300 a night when he rents the house, me, the neighbor, once again, is being inconvenienced, it's not fair. I didn't come here to have a business being ran next door to me. You guys need to start getting it together, we, we elected you guys, and it needs to start being taken care of, we can't keep having of the excuse, even a tree ordinance, Roger, you and I started working on a tree ordinance a year ago, nothing's been done about that. The Cadillac that was, me and Ray Muscat fought about for four years, is now back at the same house, it's like Christine...
Corner house, right?
Yeah, back, it's possessed, I don't know, it needs to be taken care of, no window and flat tires sitting at the corner of Hass and Cronin. It's disgusting, you come over Garden City and you see mattress, welcome from Garden City to Dearborn Heights, it looks really, really trashy. The city's falling apart, and where's our mayor? When's he gonna be accountable? And, oh, he heads the city, and he should be making sure this stuff is being taken care of, point blank. Needs to start getting together with you guys, and you guys need to start coming up with a plan.
Thank you, Ms. Venegas.
And on a lighter note, I wanna give Priority Waste kudos to their driver, who went above and beyond this week, my neighbor across the street had another neighbor parked in front of his house, the driver actually got out, moved his trash can, so he could pick it up and get his garbage, which he didn't have to do in the middle of the rain, so I wanna give kudos to Priority Waste, we complain about them when we got issues, but nobody ever wants to say anything good, so...
Thank you, Angela, Councilor Chair.
He went above and beyond.
Thank you. I have a question, so the corner, is that the north corner on, on Inxter?
It's the, um, yeah, northeast corner, where the little strip mall is.
So is it the business, the businesses over there pulling the stuff on the corner, or somebody...
We have no idea what's going, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, um, because the business is full of trash anyways, there's garbage, everything.
It's by a time, time. Yeah, well, the ordinance should go maybe check the cameras for those businesses and see exactly who's throwing those trash over there.
Well, yeah, but even the business, they don't pick up their garbage, none of them do, I mean, Peter and I are open down Warren all the time.
So, you know, I actually just had a resident tell me the other day that, it's actually your neighbor, and he said, "You wanna know what's crazy, Mo?" I said, "What?" He said, "I saw Angela, Angela picking up trash on Beach Daily." She's like, "There's no way." your neighbor, and he said, you wanna know what's crazy, Mo? I said, what? He said, I saw Angela, Angela picking up trash on Beach Daily. She's like, there's no way. I said, that, yep, that's Angela for you.
We live here. How can you not care? And if we don't start setting an example to our kids and other people, other residents, things aren't gonna get better, you guys, they're just only gonna get worse. So.
I'm gonna start calling you Angela the neighborhood angel.
No, that, that's too far. But you guys all have a merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We share your frustration, Ms. Vanegas. I keep saying Vanegas.
Councilwoman Bright called her different name today. Was it? What, what did she call you today? What'd you call her today?
Vanessa.
Vanessa.
Vanessa?
I put the names together.
I used to call her Angela Vicenegas, so now I'm calling her Angela Vanegas. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Zuhair Abdalhaq, Dearborn Heights. I just wanna ask if Mr. Deeb is on, on Zoom? I have some questions for him.
Yes.
Okay. There is a contract for the drinking water. Basically, it was submitted on November fifteen for ten million and five hundred thousand and approximately. Now there is a change order using the ARPA money for nine million, two hundred twenty-one thousand. The first part of the project was close to five million dollars. It was from city funds. It didn't need any requirement like ARPA money. And that was almost completed. I just want to know why now we have a change order for close to eight and a half million dollars? Why did this project didn't go out for bid? Why the administration did not commit this money prior to this meeting? I, I believe in this administration, whether, you know, the city council or anybody else, should follow like the city of Flint. They allocated all the money of ARPA to so many projects in the city. And I suggest you go online and see how they allocated their money before the thirty-first of December. Can Mr. Deeb explain why he has a change order for eight million dollars instead of going for bid for eight million dollars project?
Pause this time. Mr. Deeb? Can you unmute, Mr. Deeb? He's right there. Also Renee, while I saw that she was on here, we wanna thank her for the amazing cookies that she left for this council body. Merry Christmas to you and your family, a beautiful Christmas tree. You guys can all read to Renee.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Deeb, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so, two reasons. One, the project did go out for bid using federal guideline. It did not go for RFP. We did a federal guideline, ARPA qualification based. What I didn't have to award the full amount was the actual amount. How much money do we have left from ARPA? Which is what we still struggling with today. So in order, in order to award the contract by the end of December, I needed to put a number, which is how much do I have left of the ARPA money to commit? That's number one. Number two, the, the contractor that we selected under RFQ, qualification-based contract, which is ARPA required amounts, agreed, he was the low bidder on the price per linear foot, and he agreed to hold those prices. So I'm using, I'm using ARPA dollars and a contractor who agreed to hold his, his low prices and now that I have a number, how much I have left, that's what I'm using.
And when the, when the item goes out to, for discussion, we can go into more details, obviously. That is on the agenda today.
The bid, the bidding process went on the first contract of five million and some. It did not go out for the eight million dollars. We should follow the rules of ARPA regulations. Otherwise, we might have audit and we might lose that money and we have to pay it out of the city funds. So what I'm suggesting, there is remedy for this, that we, we do admit that we failed to do the proper things and we do and ask FEMA to give us an extension. And there are precedents happened before where FEMA agreed to it. Then we make a mistake and we take the chance that we might lose that money.
Mr. Deeb, did we not go out for bid for this eight million dollars?
We absolutely did. We did not, we did. This project was properly bid using qualification bid, hundred percent qualification. I would like, I would like you, Mr. Deeb, to provide the city council with copy of that bid if, if it does exist. Thank you. And if I, if it does exist, I apologize for misinforming the council. But I do believe that there was no bid on the eight million, there was a bid on the five millions, that is true. Thank you.
Mr. Deeb, did we go out for bid on the, in the nine million, outside of the five
Unmute it, all right, um, okay. So the bid was a unit price, I think we went through this before. It's a unit price contract. It's mean, it means that you will, you will commit based on the funding available. If it's a dollar a foot, if you have a thousand dollars, you, you sign a thousand feet. It's a unit price contract. We went through this before.
We did, we did. I remember this conversation.
It was properly bid using federal guideline, qualification bid, QBS, and we kept it on the street as long as possible. So this was by the book. And, and the only reason why it wasn't, we didn't commit the entire amount is because we were trying to figure out what we had left. That's the only reason. Okay, I'm going to ask again, Mr. Deeb, nothing personal, please provide me or the city council copy of that bid which went out on the eight million dollars, not the, just the five.
Well, Mr. Abdulhaq, if you understood what he was saying to you, and I remember Councilman Saab asked this, but the problem that Councilman Saab brought to my attention is it's on the linear fee is what we went on.
I understand.
We went on, we went on a bid that says, if you're spending five million, one dollar or eight million or fifteen million, you're, you're, we saw who's gonna charge us, this amount at linear fee. Now the question becomes, we are already approving this money. This is my question, and I had the Councilman Saab called me all the way from Beirut, Lebanon, and he said, we leave it open-ended. And I'm not, you know, I'm not somebody that understands about, you know, the construction of breaking up the floors and whatnot, but how do we know these companies are not taking advantage of us? How do we know that this money's not coming back? How do we know that the entire eight million is properly being, you know, spent? And so to us, we wanna make sure that the council's still being informed that everything is happening, including by the, not by the linear fee. Somebody might go tell us, yeah, I just paved up this many linear feet, but then there's no, there's no follow-up. Who measured that linear fee? Who insured us that that was that much? That person might tell us, you, you know, this was ten linear feet, but it's really four and they're billing us for ten.
Can I, can I explain something? This is not, this is not how it works, okay? So we have, we have outside, we have field people that measure every distance of, so before a pay request is processed, the contractor is paid, every, every piece of that pay request is measured, whether it's the distance, whether it's the size, because we have, and I'll be happy to share those specs with you. I mean, we were paying a field of services to consult on, basically, we have people watching the project from A to Z. And again, we bid the price based, based on unit price. So how much do you charge to pipe burst an eight inch pipe per foot? And how much for ten? And how much for twelve? So it was all specified in the bid. And all we're doing now is using what's, what we have left from ARPA to accommodate and reduce the cost of water to our citizens, all the water main breaks that we're trying to address. That's what we're trying to do. Okay, again, I'm going to ask, please provide the bid request which went out on the eight million, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Abdulhaq. Thank you, Mr. Deeb. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing now, I'll take it to Zoom, and I will give it to Councilman, Councilman Saab, who's all the way from Beirut, Lebanon. You have, how much time you want, Mr. Saab?
Good evening.
Good evening. Man, you miss it, don't you?
It's, it's morning here, but, so, you know, I, I have a few questions. At the last meeting, our chief of staff came in and I asked her, if you watched the last meeting, I said, who represents the city on ARPA? And she clearly said BLN. Why has the company that the city hired for professional services for ARPA, that you guys are voting on nearly eighty thousand dollars tonight, as number one's informed council? She sent an email saying Plant Moran gave us guidance. Last I checked, our contract that she stated at the last meeting was BLN represents the city and advises the city on ARPA. Correct?
That is correct. I, I heard her say that.
So I talked to a few other cities, or neighboring cities, before I left. And what seems to be going on with this ARPA money is a lame duck move by the administration. The funding has been available for nearly three years. Westland purchased their fleet of police vehicles through ARPA, some of the critical equipment, and other neighboring cities that do, Canton, Michigan. All of a sudden, once they put this money forward to make you either look like you're the bad person if you deny it, or we're gonna lose this money. No, you can, you can ask for an extension. I have to tonight, the motion that we submitted last week and got approved unanimously, sticks. My other question is to our city engineer. These expenditures being made by the engineer, why aren't we using a purchasing agent in the city? Why is it going through the engineering department? That's through the controller's office. We have a purchasing agent and a buyer's agent. Why is the engineer handling everything? That's outside the scope of work. Last thing is I have is the administration literally waited for the last minute to submit these funds to you. We've had them for years. Earlier this year, us on council myself, Mr. Deeb came up, we've had the lo, the most amount of water main breaks and they need more funding. Why wasn't this money used done? This is a move to strong arm council, approving this, as there's a risk of losing the funds or forfeit it. That's not true, though. You can request an extension. You either do it right, or down the road, we're gonna pay the consequences for it.
You know, you know what I don't want, Councilman? I don't want another meeting in December.
So, Council Chair, with all respect, again, the chief of staff herself stated that BLN serves the city as a city advisor.
Yeah, I'm bringing up the chief of staff to you now, Councilman. I agree with you.
Why, why is Plant Moran involved in this if she, if Mariana's there, I see her walking up, she said BLN represents the city. I reached out to BLN, nobody ever responded back. Has, has any council member on here ever spoke to anybody from BLN or received an email from them?
No. No.
Such a mystery company. I urge you to, to put priority for funding for essential services for police, fire, and DPW, to improve our streets, to improve the quality for services for our residents, our citizens have to get our, our food vehicles, our fire vehicles, our DPW equipment vehicles. I just don't get why this funding's been available for so long and they waited five days before the expiration date to tell you here, change, make it, you know, make this change and add this. Honestly, it feels more of a political move than anything else.
Now, look, I will tell you this.
And I ask you to make, be careful and be informed about the decisions you make, because you can't allow this money to just be spent without oversight, without council having awareness over it. Because honestly, it was a political maneuver. And shame on us as a council for not asking. How many times did we ask, is there ARPA money? Well, there is no ARPA money, it's in the general fund, isn't that what was said? Yes?
I just wanna tell you, I did a little just research after you and I got off the phone this morning. You stand correct, you can use ARPA funds to pay for fleets of cars and DPW and things of that nature. However, that was the, that was the unrestricted amount of money. The restricted amount of money had, hang on, the restricted amount of money had several different criterias on things that you can and can't use. Now, is there something that changed about these, you know, about the restrictive funds that can be used on, on things that are outside of the criteria? I don't know. But here is Mariana shaking her head saying no, so.
Council Chair, where's BLN? I'm not asking for Mariana. Where's BLN?
I agree, where is BLN? And I agree, but you know what? We also have Michelle here and Michelle is somebody who, you know.
I don't, we're not paying Michelle any dollars.
Has, has been a little bit of, of above and beyond for us, so, and I know Michelle does not sugarcoat anything and she's straightforward, so I'm also gonna, I, I agree, though, we paid money to BLN. Where are they?
You're about to approve eighty thousand dollars for a company that I think is some shell company that has never come once with a human face in front of council for you guys to take advice from and then suddenly Plant Moran, we're not paying, uh, Plant, uh, Plant Moran is not getting paid for this.
They made a lot of money off of us.
No, 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 hear me out. This is not who we paid the city to advise us a guy for.
I agree.
Let's give the chance to Chief of.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna go and get.
I would actually like to hear from Councilman Wenzel before, that way I can answer all the questions.
Councilman Wenzel's on something completely different. I know why he's here, he's got a letter here for us.
You wanna wait until public comment is over and then I'll talk to him?
No, I think Councilman Saab, I'm letting him continue, so if you wanna respond to him.
I think he wants to go to sleep.
Okay, I have a lot of information and I did a lot of digging this week to try to find all of the motions and the timeline of everything that has happened since we started here. So first of all, BLN was hired as our advisor. As you recall, it was on a task-based items, right? So what they did for us, what's that, they did a survey of the city back in 2023 where they explained to the entire residents of the city what ARPA was eligible for. They opened a survey, we had a lot of meetings with the residents and with the council where they explained all of the eligible uses for ARPA funds. So first of all, yes, we've already paid seventy thousand dollars to BLN, it was for specific tasks that we gave them. Why have you not heard from them? Because I didn't wanna waste more ARPA funds on a same opinion letter that I have on a recording and I have on a presentation and I can get from our Plant Moran partners who are here on a daily basis. Because no, the ruling has not changed from 2023 until nine, now, it is still the same ruling. As I mentioned at the last meeting, to my understanding, nothing has changed, nothing changed in the one month that I was on and off with the city. So again, the same ruling stance, the same presentations, the same PowerPoints that you can find in our own website, that the council has approved, still maintain their opportunity. Again, if you want BLN, they did send an email, they agree with the Plant Moran opinion letter. I didn't wanna pay them to do a whole study and come to this meeting for, for a repetitive piece of information that I can show you in a video if you need it. Number two, with regards to where the money has gone, right? So as you recall, in fiscal year, and I have visuals for this if you would like to see them, but maybe it'll jot your memory if I bring up the dates and some facts there. So in the fiscal year of 2022, 2023, we allocated two million, one hundred and fifty-seven, two hundred and thirty-one dollars from ARPA revenue funds for unrestricted fund balance. You may recall Mr. Subuda's presentation where it showed where our general fund would have been had we not used this one-time allocation of unrestricted funds for the, for the, from the ARPA funds. So that was back in July of 2022. Later, in February of 2023, BLN hosted presentations here in the council chambers as well as in the police department, where they explained how ARPA worked, they explained what the eligible uses were for, and they presented the, the survey results for all of us, right? One of the main categories that all of our residents consistently told us they wanted us to use the money on was on water and infrastructure projects. That was always the top category of all of the items that came in the surveys. There were a few other ones, in all due respect, police was never one of them, neither was fire, because those were not items that were within the bucket of priorities for the, for the residents.
How many people were part of that survey? Wasn't it like twelve and we tried to get it to more people, but only twelve people were part of that survey?
I don't recall, I, I attached the, the survey here, I can send it to you guys. It was, I believe about a hundred and fifty, a little bit more than that, but I sent you the survey results and, and if you want me to ask for more information about who specifically it was, I'm pretty sure BLN still has that information. Now, after that, on March 28th, after we had the presentation from BLN, the council allocated the remaining revenue loss funds, Promotion 23152, which was about seven million something. And you are correct, Mr. Baydun, yes, we could have used those seven million dollars to purchase vehicles, et cetera. But again, as you recall, our unrestricted fund balance was very low. It continues to be very low. That is why the city truly chose to use our revenue loss for the unrestricted funds as it was meant to be. So it is currently there. If you wanna purchase vehicles, as I mentioned before, you can do so using the unrestricted fund balance that the city possess. That's where our ARPA money is and where the eligible ARPA money is for purchases such as vehicles. On, later on, on May 23rd, the council supported the application that Mr. Deeb presented for us to go for the Eagle SRF loans, which were a big portion of the projects that we have ongoing right now.
Is that the one where, where Councilman and Wenzel and I voted no on?
I don't remember the vote, I have them in here, you can, you can look at them. But ultimately, it was for lead water service, water meters and water main replacements.
Like seven million or something?
It was for thirty-four million dollars. It was for the application itself, right? It was the beginning of the bonds that we just concluded a few months ago. So that was back in May 2023. On March 19th of 2024, we presented the proposed ARPA funding for the DWSRF and the CWSRF to the council, which again, it passed. In here, we presented how we wanted to use the ARPA funds in conjunction with the SRF loans, which were again, for this three projects that I had mentioned before, lead water service, water meters and water main replacements. On April 9th, Per Motion 24153, the council approved the expenditure of two million, three hundred and eighty-seven, four hundred and seventy-three towards the Eagle SRF loan as a match for one of those loans, right? Because we needed it. And the latest one was on November 26th, the council authorized awarding the ten million dollars, four hundred and ninety-six for the water main replacement project, which had gone out through the official RFQ process. So that is how we have allocated the funds. There have been multiple presentations by Wade Trim, by Mr. Deeb, by myself, with regards to our plans on how to best utilize the ARPA funds. Because at the time, back in 2023, we didn't know if we were gonna get awarded the CWSRF and DWSRF loans, and we wanted to maximize our money. So what was gonna be our priority? If we had made a decision back in 2023, we probably would have put all the ARPA funds towards the water meter project. But now we found a different source of funding for that. So that is why it was a little delayed in this process because we were truly trying to maximize the funding for the majority of projects that the residents wanted. Um, with the funding that we currently have, we're tackling more projects than we would have been able to had we allocated the funds back in twenty twenty-three. Um, again.
Mariana, I have a question.
Let her finish, let her finish her, her, her timeline, please, Councilman. Continue, Mariana.
Um, again, this is just a short summary of, of everything that has happened. There has been ongoing communication back and forth from the administration to the council with regards to how we're planning to use the ARPA funds. So saying that we waited until the last minute, we did, but it was because we were waiting on the other grant sources to make sure we maximize those funds. It, it wasn't out of, you know, ill intent. We were truly just trying to help the residents. Um, with regards to, uh, why Mr. Dib is, uh, the one doing this projects? Again, he is our city engineer. He is in charge of all of our water meter projects. Uh, with regards to our purchasing agent, again, all of our proposals and, uh, requests for proposals have gone through the controller's office, which that is their responsibility as always. But it is always the responsibility of the director who's going to, um, manage the department to, to truly look at what the bidders are proposing. And that is why Mr. Dib was so involved with this because it, it truly did belong to his department. And he hasn't done it alone, of course. Um, again, I believe that based on the proposals that the city has put forward, um, the reason that we changed the motion that you approved just two weeks ago with regards to the award, it's because when the premium pay changed, there was two hundred thousand dollars that were up in the air and we didn't wanna lose those two hundred thousand dollars. So that is why you see that item on the agenda here is for us to, uh, award those two hundred thousand dollars that were nowhere right now. Uh, at the time that we had done the original, we had expected that the premium pay was gonna be higher than it ended up being. And that's why the two hundred thousand discrepancy was there, which it is explained in the motion as well. Um.
I just wanna just say one thing.
That's okay. I think I'm done. Like, that's, that's pretty much the breakdown of what I have.
Between the administration communicating to the residents and looking out for the residents and the council, that's, that's not communication. A communication is, hey, guys, one, two, three is happening. This is what we have. This is how we wanna use the money. Instead, it's like, hey, we're gonna do, like, you guys, you let me tell how it happened. Because I, I wanna, I wanna address this and I gave you the time. You made it sound like it was the greatest thing and it was excitement and joy and heck yeah, we're gonna do this or we're gonna do that, we're gonna do this and this is how it's gonna happen. This is the only way we can spend the money. It was more of, it was more of a drill and instill, more than communication. It was never a communication. It was, this is what it is, this is the restrictions, this is what B L N told us, this is what our counterparts have told us, and this is what we're gonna do with the money. I can tell you on two of those things, I voted no on. Because I knew that one, it was gonna increase water rates. And I can tell you another thing here that I didn't agree with a lot of this. The reality is, it's a democracy and the majority of this passed because the majority of these votes said yes. But let me tell you something, there was never a line of communication. As a council chair, I can tell you right now, the administration has never called us and said, hey, guys, you know, hey, councilman, hey, council chair, or hey, councilwoman, this is what we'd like to see, this is what we wanna do. What, what are your thoughts? There was never that line of communication. So I do not want you to paint that this council here ever had any communicate. Our mayor and our corporation council was not even here. The mayor has been here in six meetings. There's no communication. The administration is not communicating to the residents. They're not communicating to this body. And let me tell you what you're not gonna do is throw and blame, put the blame and say, hey, we've been telling you guys this for over a year. No, that the reality isn't. Yeah, you had a hundred and fifty applied. You have sixty-eight thousand residents. Clearly, that survey was, was a failure. If you're telling me point one percent of the people there came out under the survey. Um, I'm, that, that is just my opinion on it. But I, and then no claps, guys, but the reality is, we're now here, which does seem like a lame duck. It does seem like right before the end, hey, let's go ahead and make this vote. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you, you, you're right. You didn't have the ill intentions and you wanted to, you know, maximize with all the grants that supposedly we're, we've received the most money under this administration. Where are they? We, we just went through a budget hearing with Michelle. We said, remove every single thing that has not been awarded to us. We're going into January of twenty twenty-five. Instead, the company that we hired increased their, their pricing on us. We've got, you've got nothing to showcase for. There's no money here. And now we're saying, well, you know, we didn't get the grants that we needed, so we're just gonna take the money and we're gonna put it in, in linear feet with this company that, which we didn't go out and propose for. Reality is, that's the truth. And what I'd like to hear Mariana is just say, guys, we dropped the ball. We're, we're not gonna badger you. It's all right. You dropped the ball.
I don't believe so. There are multiple presentations with councils that show otherwise. I'm sorry you feel that way. Um, and, and again, I am truly telling you, yes, there are deadlines. Yes, things are rushed. That is just the reality of government. As far as where is the money? Again, you're never gonna see the money. You're gonna see the projects. You're gonna see the work being done. But that's not going to change how your general fund balance looks. That's simply gonna change the overall infrastructure of the city and the services that you're providing.
Thank you. Councilman Saab, go ahead. I'm sorry, buddy. Got a little emotional.
Re- remember that when they came in front of you and said, we got a hundred percent of the water meters covered. Right? Mr. Dib, the mayor, Mariana, everybody, you remember that? Then they came back and said they're gonna cover fifty percent. And they said they wanted to use ARPA money to pay the difference. Correct?
Yeah.
But that Mariana clearly just said that this is for the water meters in her presentation. Secondly, Mr. Dib is not a director. Correct?
Okay, he's, he's a city.
Engineer, he's not the director. Because when we asked him that, he said his department is not a director. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The charter separates the city engineer. He is his own entity. He is the city engineer by the charter.
Is he a director?
He's his own entity.
He's the city engineer. He is considered a director because he has the same level as authority.
Own entity. Doesn't even need to call himself the director of engineering or just engineer. It's just a title. He's his own entity.
Council chair, I still stick to my words. The motion we put is a valid motion with that money. If the city needs an extension, the city will get an extension. This is a lame duck move. This is the last second thing they're trying to push through. And to tell me that they have a survey of a hundred and fifty residents? My fifth great nephew had a better survey at school students in it. Ridiculous.
All right, Councilman.
Eleven million dollars for a hundred and fifty residents. Do the math.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Enjoy your trip. Safe travels. I, I, I'll just, I'll tell you, I, I one hundred percent concur with him on this. My only fear is the reality of things. And the reality of things is, if this is not allocated, signed, contracted and updated by the thirty-first. The reality is, if it's not updated by the thirty-first, now we have failed our residents on this nine million dollars. You know? You have anything to say?
I wanted to ask Michelle, uh, do you think we can get a, uh, the extension on this?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. By the way, Michelle's been here since eleven A M. this morning.
I was here even earlier than eleven A M. But, um, no, you will not get an extension. Um, the treasury has said time and time again, you have had until December thirty-first, twenty-four to obligate these funds. They are not offering any extensions at all.
Let's just say we say we're gonna go against the restriction.
Yeah.
And we say, hey, you know, we are gonna use some of it for our cars and this. Are they gonna ask us to pay that back?
They will. Yes.
Nobody, nobody's seen it yet because we've never received ARPA money.
I, I'm.
Nobody knows that to be factual. What if they come back and say, you know what, you know, there's no precedent?
There's no precedent otherwise either. There is precedent of the federal government retaking money of other grants when you have questioned costs. So if you go ahead and spend this money on ineligible expenses, not only are you out the money that you spent, you're also repaying the federal government what they gave you. So.
The opinion that was sent to us, was that done by you or?
That was by my partner, Brian. Yeah, so by the firm, absolutely. Yep.
And you support that opinion?
Absolutely, yes.
Do we, do we gamble on Councilman Saab? That's the question. Thank you, Michelle. I'm gonna let Councilman Wenzel, who's been patiently waiting to go up.
That's fine.
Which he doesn't need to go up there. You can sit at your chair, but.
Oh, I, I, I'll go up here. That's fine.
Okay. Maybe he's, maybe he's, just wants to be a resident one time.
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm speaking as a resident for one point and as a city council member for another point.
I'm gonna let your one point go for two minutes.
Okay. Uh, four, two, one, eight, Two Lane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm speaking on behalf of some other residents in Dearborn Heights. Residents live on the forty-four hundred block of McKinley, the south end of Dearborn Heights. Um, they've had a severe rat problem for some time now. And we talk about blight, looking at things, or look, look, look bad. But a rat problem is something that's completely different. And this problem is getting out of hand. Uh, there's been many attempts to, uh, contact the administration and get some kind of uh, resolution on this without any, uh, success. Um, I've contacted and they've contacted the, the, uh, ordinance department. And they, they're doing everything they can, but their hands are kind of tight. There was a garage on this block that was condemned and ticketed by the ordinance department to be torn down. It took over a year to get this garage torn down. It was full of junk. And now the garage is torn down, but everything that was in the garage is still piled up in the yard. And, um, there's been many sightings by all the residents that have gotten ahold of me of rats in the area. Uh, just recently, the rats chewed the wiring harness on a, a leased vehicle. It's not covered by insurance or warranty and it was a three thousand dollar cost. Um,
Yeah.
The, the, uh, the, the, the problem is we have a, um, a retired nun that lives on that block. She lives in a house with a crawl space. And she has rats in her house, not around her house, they're in her house. There's people that have been over there and seen rats run across the floor in the living room. Big rats go underneath the couch and not come out because they're living in their couch. And she will not leave her house. She's lived there for many, many years. And she called the professional exterminator, which was recommended by, uh, the ordinance department. And they had her sign a one-year contract. And they got rid of the rats, but the rats keep coming in from outside. They chewed hose in the dryer, dryer vent cover and through a dryer vent, in through the dryer vent hose inside and into her house. And this lady is living, she's almost ninety years old. She's living with rats in her house, not in her garage, now running around her garbage cans in her house. And we have to do something about this. Dearborn has a very extensive rat program. Dearborn, they even bait their sewers to get rid of rats. And lately.
They, they, what do they do to the sewers?
They bait, they put poison in the sewers.
Inside the sewers?
Hmm.
Not like around like the, the topping or anything, right?
No, no, you know, in the, in the manholes. Recently, they released dozens and dozens of feral cats. The same cats that we're trying to get rid of in Dearborn Heights. They're releasing them to get rid of the rat problem. I think we really need to look at this. A rat issue is a very severe issue. And, and if you had rats living, this lady, I spoke with her and she said at nighttime, she hears the rats chewing and chewing at night, but she, she will not leave. She sits, lays in bed in this house, sleeps in this house. And that's terrible. And we have to do something about this. We have to either relook at our rat control program, which I think we definitely should do. Because when this administration ran for office, they said they were gonna make Dearborn Heights a city that you'd be proud to live in. And I, I think it's getting, it's getting worse. People don't wanna live here. On the second note, I'm speaking as a city councilman. We all, we received an email, uh, the last couple of days from Hassan Jamal, and I'm really confused about the, the content. If he, if he's on Zoom, can he speak about it?
Councilman, I'm gonna let you finish your time up before I start letting that happen. He's gonna have two minutes to be able to speak his mind. I've read his emails. We've all read his emails. We all share the frustration and, and I think we all demand the same thing. Hey, this man has money.
Not just him, the whole department.
Yeah, and, 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 and retro pay them. Because let me tell you, we, this body made a vote. Michelle is a witness and she's a testament to it. We said, give them their money. For some odd reason, this mayor thinks he can just bully people however the hell he wants to.
Chair, I, I passed out a resolution. Is this something that we can vote on today or is this thing, is necessary to vote on this?
It's not necessary to vote on this, but I'm gonna tell you something. I'm gonna add it to the fourteenth meeting. And if, if the mayor doesn't have something resolved by, by, by the fourteenth, I'm, I'm all for that.
Well, yeah, this is, he's, it's, it's a blatant, um, not doing what is told to by city council. It was, this was all voted on and approved. And like, then the resolution, it states that we should ask our corporation-appointed corporation counsel Gary Miyake to look into this and take it, take the legal action that's necessary.
Council chair, I mean, it's not one thing, Councilman. My recommendation is, if we're gonna do this, to do this for everything we asked for and the administration did not do.
Everything.
It's Mr. Jamal, the whole department, every other resolution that we passed and he didn't do.
The three ordinance officers we passed.
Everything.
Joe Smith resolution that we passed.
Because it's not about one person. This is not about one person.
Our, our school lights, our.
Good point.
Enhancing our, our, the quality of life around the schools and our parks. Like, what the hell's going on? Councilman, trust me, I, I am, but here's Dana, our deputy clerk. I didn't go and say, nope, can't be done right now. Correct. Speak into your mic though, please, Ben.
Because it's a special meeting, there are different rules. If all of the council members were here, then you would be able to vote to have that put on the agenda, but because you're missing a council person, it'll have to go on.
It's Councilman Saab's fault.
Saab is.
Miss Councilman.
Extremely difficult.
Okay, well.
Mr. Diffakal. But you know, I, I want you to, I want you to know, I'm so sorry. I'm just gonna say this one part here. Look, I, I've spoken to Councilman Wenzel on this many times and it's like. Look, to those who are listening at home, we don't have direction. We don't have the support. Our corporation council don't answer to us or listen to us. Our mayor doesn't respond or show up or talk to us. And when we hear from our administration or, you know, what's going on, we either get screamed at, yelled at. Things are very kind of sending. It's become, it's become, and it's not no cultural shift. It's, it's become extremely ugly, hostile. Uh, it's to the point now where like, I don't even care to communicate. Mr. Jamal worked for the city of Dearborn Heights. The mayor chose to let him go. You owe the guy twenty thousand dollars. You know, our H R director was, was in on that meeting. I mean, I'm sure even if we put this resolution, they're not gonna do it, but please, give this man his twenty-one thousand dollars or twenty thousand four hundred and let's keep it moving. H R, can, you, you think we could do that? We gotta, we gotta have to like take it to legal action because the city's already paid enough money in legal actions from this administration. The most sued administration in the history of Dearborn Heights.
I have one request. It seems that you're talking about information that we don't have. So if you have a recent email from Mr. Jamal requesting something new, please let us know. I know.
The mayor is on there. The mayor and, and our H R director is on there.
The prior items, uh, we're already looking into them. Um, we're getting our, our ropes in order. But, um, if there is anything that I'm missing, this one from twelve seventeen, I don't think I had seen before, but we are working on it.
Okay, so yeah, there you go, Tom. We'll get that resolved.
Well, what's taken so long? I mean, it's a severance package. Employment was.
Yep, go ahead. Councilman, I'm gonna let the councilwoman, Briar, next.
I agree, we owe him the nineteen thousand dollars, but more important right now, I'm hearing that he no longer is involved with the state police, which handles the removal of the properties in the south end. So I don't know if our new person is going to become affiliated so those twenty-six houses can be torn down.
I'm sure the administration is gonna set that up and.
Okay, that's really important that we follow through on that.
All right. Uh, any more public comments? Seeing none, let's go to fund transfers and current claims. Oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna start iPhone first. Sorry, Barb, you're next.
Unmute yourself.
Is she unmuted?
Do you hear me loud?
Yep, you got two minutes. State your name, the city resident, and the street that you live on.
My name is Hassan Jamal, state of Michigan. Uh, just addressing the ARPA funding, whether the ARPA funding is eligible, not eligible for police cars. Those are, there are other cities using those monies and they are advertising on their websites. Anybody can contact them, see how ARPA. Anybody can contact them, see how ARPA is being done, and you take it from there. Let's move on to the bid process. In the $10 million bidding, you have in front of you today a new contract for a bid already been done before. So why you need a new contract for change order? You don't do that in a federal funding contract. At the same time, the CFR 200 is required, when you go out for bid, to have the cost being designated and looked at. You have to advertise, making sure that you have the fund that you advertise for the cost. You cannot advertise for a project costing $5 million and have a contract for $5 million, then go back later and have another contract based on a change order double the size of the, of the, of the original bidding. You are depriving the public, the disabled owners of business, the minorities, the women-owned businesses, the veteran-owned businesses. You are depriving them from the opportunity to bid on federal funding. You, 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 in my opinion, if the failure of the administration caused delay or not able to, just admit the failure, request for your congressman to support you. Just try. This is, this is ARPA funding.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal, your time is up. Thank you very much. I'll probably have Mr. Deep maybe answer your question. About the other cities maybe using the ARPA money, probably we're going back to the restricted funds and non-restricted funds. So I think we're too late in the game now, but thank you very much for your time. Mr. Deep, are you still on? Yes, please.
Counsel.
How you doing, Mr. Deep?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you. Can you answer, Mr. Jamal, why there was a new change order for the contract?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Once again, this went by the book. And I do have, while I'm listening to all this, I do have all the supporting documentation from the federal website regarding the change order versus this stuff. I will be happy to share with all the council.
Please, please.
To print it tomorrow. It is done by the book. The reason, the only reason it wasn't included initially is, once again, we needed to determine what the number was. It's going to the low bidder, and it was publicly bid, and it was bid by the, by our procurement officer, not by Ali Deb or anyone in my department. It was publicly bid and advertised by the federal guideline. It was a qualification-based bid. I will be happy to share the, we did it by the book. I have no fear of this process being rejected. I would be happy to have included the full amount in the contract if I had known what the final amount was. And that's the reason why we're doing it this way. It's perfectly legal. Once we go to item three and you determine what my final number is, we will include that and the, and the contract, if approved today, will be signed by the deadline. We will have no risk of losing that money, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
I will share with you all the supporting document.
Yes, please, Mr. Deep, do that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely nothing to hide, sir.
Thank you, sir. I guess we're moving on to more on Zoom. Madam Deputy Clerk. Barb, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
As to Tom Wenzel, I feel your pain about the rats. We too.
I'm sorry, let me stop you for a second. Do you mind stating your name and the street you live on and the city? For the record.
Barb Runney, Detroit Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for Tom Wenzel, I feel your pain about the rats. Next door to the Airbnb that I live next door, there are two dead rats right by the porch that they just keep walking over. And then, Tom, you have been to the house two doors down from me where the damn hillbillies live that can't seem to take out their garbage. I know in the summer you went over there. So this is just a big problem. I know ordinance has a very hard time keeping track of everybody. But, you know, when we live next to pigs and we allow Airbnbs, and people don't care because they're not invested in the city. So this all goes back to if you sell them to people who take pride in their homes instead of, you know, I have nothing against renters, but I have, and I'll call them damn hillbillies. Their, their whole garage is full of trash. It's been like this for years, and no one seems to care. So with the rats, they're everywhere down here in the south end. I'm sure they're in the north end, but we got a ton in the south end. I've had them in my house, had them in my yard. We, we have rat traps, we kill them every night, you know. It's just a thing that you just have to deal with, so. I hope something is done, and I feel your pain.
Thank you.
Other than that, I wish everyone a happy holiday, but get used to it. Rats are gonna be here. Thanks.
All right, next up, we have Mike McCaffrey. Are you speaking as a director or as a resident?
I'm speaking as a resident, I guess. Just wanted to say thank you for considering the ARPA payment.
I'm sorry, Director.
State the name.
Oh, sorry, Michael McCaffrey.
State the name.
Dearborn.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, gotta get used to that again. Anyway, just wanted to say thank you very much for considering the ARPA payment, and that's it. Pass that along.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Happy holidays, Director.
Have a great, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else on the audience? Move on. Next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims and ACH wire transfers, 6-1 through 6-15 and 6-17 through 6-29, as submitted.
Second motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none? Yes? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have reports from city officials. We have the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA premium payment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the use of 307,500 for the police department, fire department, and general government employees' premium pay. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payments from the ARPA funds as outlined in 9-8.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I have a discussion. I know that we've heard from, you know, some of our friends that work in the city hall about their expression on one, why did we lower the amount? And had we, you know, not added the part-time employees, would the amount go back? I believe the initial resolution before the administration put theirs was councilman, former councilman Abdul Hack and Councilman Wenzel. Is that correct?
Yes.
And their numbers were 1,01500. So we went back and we stuck with the initial ground rules of what we agreed to. The 2,500 or the 2,000 that the administration initially came out with. I'm, you know, I don't even recall it, but I think it was Councilman Wenzel that just said, I had a resolution prior to this. Why are we ignoring it? Why didn't we give it to them? We've already passed it. We've already, we've already allocated the money. It's on, it's on the council members if you guys want to increase that. I think ultimately $1,000 to everybody and 1,500 to police and fire is fair. I also think it's extremely fair that we include our part-time employees. Because, yeah, maybe not, you know, we can't, we can't, you know, pinpoint who did and who didn't work. But what I can tell you is, I drove to, to the police station. I'm our new police chief. And I spoke to the two individuals. I said, are you guys part-time or full-time? They said, we're part-time. And they said, you know, we've been watching the city council meeting, and we heard that you're going to be including the part-time individuals on, on this. And let me tell you, Mo, we worked. We worked during COVID, even though that the courts and the police courts were closed. They had us doing administrative work and things in the courts. They did not lay us off. I did not get to sit at home. So to me, you know, I think it's, it's 100% just as important. Somebody worked three days, or somebody worked two days, and somebody worked four, or somebody worked, some of them worked three, like. Some of them even said they, even sometimes they worked four days, which they said, I came into volunteer because my work wasn't done. But as far as the amount, the amount did not change because part-time employees were added. I just feel like if a part-time employee didn't work, or majority of them part-time employees did work, we should still accommodate for them. And let me tell you, if we have some of our crosswalks that are still with us, that even during COVID did not leave us, then 100% I support giving them some type of money. Because they didn't collect money from the city when they were not working. But they still chose to stay with Dearborn Heights, and we know how hard it is to get crosswalks. Because every single school district is struggling and complaining, where are the crosswalks? Where are the crosswalks? Where are the crosswalks? Do you know how many crosswalks even remained with us? Crossing guards, crosswalks, councilwoman, same thing.
I know that they're all included. Sorry, they're a little bit mixed because they're by alphabetical order, one, two.
And these crossing guards have been with us since 2020?
Correct. I can get you the exact number. I'm sorry, it's not filtered like that, but I'm just doing a quick search.
To me, it's the holidays, guys.
But all of, all of those individuals you mentioned are included in our list, the current one that we were proposing.
Were we able to include the clerk in there as well?
Correct. We did, from the numbers that you have there, we do have to make a $5,000 change to include those five additional ones. But we did make that calculation with the new numbers.
Who are those five additional?
Oh, thank you. You see, yours does have it broken down. One, two, three, four.
Is there amazing?
Nine crossing guards are still with the city that were with the city back during the COVID days. Yes, there are five additional requested from the clerk's office, which are seasonal election staff. I don't want to mention names, but it's five of them.
And they seasonal, and they were seasonal, but they worked during COVID?
They worked during the elections of COVID, correct.
Yes.
I do want to offer one point of clarification. Again, the number that the council had awarded in the 2023 award, December of 2023, it was 1,000 for the employees that are general employees and 1,500 for the police and fire. The one that I had proposed, because I'm sorry, I had a baby in January and I completely forgot about that one, was $2,000 for all employees. So that's where the change was with regards to the money.
Any directors receiving this?
Yes.
Who are the directors?
I believe it's five of us. No, maybe less than that, maybe four of us. But Bill Disherun, Rick Watland, myself, Linsenya, who, well, wasn't a director at the time.
Were you hired in 2021 or 2020?
Me?
Yeah.
2021.
Doesn't this start from the start of COVID?
So we did everyone that was working up until June 22nd of 2021. So anyone hired prior to June 22nd of 2021.
I don't know if we agreed that we were giving anything to directors. Unless they were an employee and then became a director. I don't think anybody that came in as a director is getting anything as a director.
It was just the elected officials that were excluded in the original motion. If you would like to change that, you can do that today.
So include elected officials.
Oh, Michael McCaffrey, sorry, that's the one I was missing. He just spoke about it.
Councilor Chair, I was contacted by.
And Kim Sauer.
A person that's in the ordinance department now. And I checked the list and that person's name wasn't on the list. And.
Kevin Abbott, he fixed it.
They fixed it?
Yeah, Kevin Abbott is on there.
Okay.
His name was on there in the beginning.
Well, it wasn't because he was working for the EPW, and then he had a little timer.
No, I got.
But if we go by what you just said, then he would be qualified for that.
His name was on there from the beginning.
He's number one on our list, so he's there.
All right, Kevin, you got it.
Councilor Chair.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the seasonal employees. Do they, how do they, how does it work with them? I mean, are they still with us? And how does it, they always volunteer, or is it?
Yes. As far as I'm concerned, our seasonal employees for elections, they're repetitive employees that come back during every election season. So they are a very valuable resource to the city because they know how our elections work. And I know the clerk's office truly appreciates that.
And they're considered as part-time?
They are part-time.
No, they're considered like the way we're paying them, 500 each?
A thousand each, yeah. Part-timers and seasonal employees are getting the same as.
500 each?
Regular employees, $1,000.
Oh, we get the part-time?
Everybody gets a thousand. I mean, I think, I mean.
There is some discussion with emails going back and forth with regards to that from some of the employees. So that is an item that you can consider today, too.
What's that?
Some of the employees have mentioned that they think it's unfair for part-time employees to get the same amount as full-time employees. I know that they sent some emails to the council members, but that is something that is up to you to decide.
Yeah, look, I, I know, and I kind of went back and forth. To hear and feel, actually feel the excitement and joy from these. And these are the same security guards that have been with us for over 25 years. 25 years, guys. And to feel the, the way they radiate over me and said like, finally, we're getting something. You know, Councilman, I appreciate this. This will go, you know, above and beyond for me and my family. It's the holidays, it's Christmas. Same way I want to say to take it away from the directors, the same way I'm not gonna say I'm gonna take it away from our part-time employees. I'm gonna be honest, the seasonal employees that worked for the clerk's office, they're great, that's amazing. These are seasonal that are working just during election. It's, it's a, you know, to me, you know, maybe that we can eliminate to maybe bring it down to 500. I don't see we take that away from them. But some, some of these, you know, security guards that are working in our courts, working in our, or even working at city hall for that matter, have, you know.
It's up to you.
Councilor Chair. May I?
Yeah.
Thank you. Instead of taking that down, is there money still if we can have everybody get the 1,500, the full-time employees?
Can we get 1,500 to full-time employees?
All the full-time employees just to match it with the police on fire, or that's gonna be not enough money?
No, there's more than enough money, Councilman.
There is more than enough money currently because we have not allocated the money, right? So the two motions you have in your hands today, those are the remainder of.
I mean, I always suggest part-time and seasonal, keep it at 1,000 and make it across the board for police, fire, and all employees at 1,500.
You want to do the math? Michelle?
I have my computer, that's why I brought it. And I think I have the Excel sheet where we can just make that calculation because that will change your other motion for tonight. So if you give me just a few minutes, we can make that change.
The council on how they feel about it.
Yeah, if you vote on it, I'll make the calculations.
Any other, anybody disagree or agree to that, Councilman?
I agree with that. Did we resolve the Parks and Recreation? Were they all included?
Yes.
Okay, so take everybody up to 1,500, all part-time employees and seasonal employees at 1,000.
Correct.
There you go. Can you give us that figure? You just made an extra 500, Chief of Staff. Don't leave us in the new year.
Can we, do we need to change the motion beside the number? Then we, do we need to say, like, state 1,500 for all full-time employees and 1,000 for part-time and seasonal?
Your original motion only had a total dollar amount. I think because she knew that you might, there could be changes. So I think as long as she gets the total dollar amount, you can just amend it to whatever it is, 300 and you can say 20,000 or whatnot.
Yeah. I mean, I would feel better just to add those numbers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we want to add those numbers.
Okay.
Sorry, it's a two-part. So the backup to my motion only had the total number because I was relying on the motion that had been approved in December of 2023. Now, if you're gonna make changes to the motion from December 2023, then you can rescind that motion and include the categories in the new motion from today.
We're not rescinding that motion from there. We're just amending that motion.
You have to rescind it to amend it.
No. Well, you're right.
Sorry. I mean, it can be the same motion, but you have to rescind the number.
Yeah, we're rescinding the number, we're not rescinding that motion.
We're not, we're not bringing in.
You have to rescind the motion. You can't have two conflicting motions.
I know, we'll rescind this motion and we'll amend the old motion.
You can't amend a motion. You can only rescind one.
We amend them all the time.
When the minutes have been approved, then you rescind that motion.
Do we have that motion number?
I'm gonna look to see if we have it here. I'm going to look to see if we have it here. But if, um, is it in the backup?
I just, I want to make you clear.
Twenty-three dash five fifty-two.
And who brought forward this new motion? Because I do not want this to be taken away from the former councilman and and councilman Wansel. Council chair?
It was put on the agenda today by the administration.
It was brought by Councilman Abdulha.
We talked about the date on that original motion. And that's why we said we'll, at the next meeting, we'll come up, we'll bring out a new motion with the current date.
No, that's the old one that we're rescinding.
Yeah, yeah.
But she's saying it's being brought forward by the administration, but it's isn't the administration's initial motion.
So No, no, this cut twenty-three dash five five two was brought by Councilman Abdul Ha.
Yes.
I know this new one though, because we're rescinding this one.
Okay.
Basically not saying it's still Abdul Ha and Councilman Wansel. Now saying it's the administration. What I'm trying to do is for for the for the sake of minutes and notes and then for the past, when somebody looks back at this, the credit needs to go to them. The credit needs to go to Councilman Wansel and and uh Councilman Abdul Ha. So that's why in my cases, I don't want to rescind that one.
Well, you can rescind it, but then when you're stating the motion, stating this motion, you can stay state giving them the credit. In conjunction with, yeah, Council West
And I still want to say with conjunction of this minute because I want this to be backed up. I mean, I want to be able to be able to look back at this in twenty years and be able to honor Councilman Wansel and and Councilman Abdul Ha on this.
What's the wording with conjunction with?
Councilman Wansel and Councilman Abdul Ha. Abdul Ha's resolution.
And and give the number.
But this one would have to be rescinded because that's what's approved in the minutes for that time.
Because the minutes were approved already.
Yeah, I'll I'll read the whole thing.
Are you able to get those numbers?
I am going to read all this.
You don't have to. This is how it was stated back with that, but you also want to put that you want it, that it's in conjunction with.
This motion.
You're rescinding this.
I'll rescinding this.
Because this is the one that we can't use because the dollar amounts are different.
So I'll rescind this and make a new motion.
Yes.
But say in conjunction with
The resolution provided by
Councilman Abdul Ha, Councilman
And then you would want the dollar amounts.
Okay. Do we have the dollar amount? I need to rescind this.
Where's the old man at?
You have to because this was only approved and it was
Before I amend this.
Rose did?
I hung out with her on Sunday.
Oh, no.
Did you push it out? She's teasing that.
I'm so sorry. The new number would be three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That's for full-time employees, one thousand, three hundred fifty-six thousand.
Even?
Even?
Even, yes.
No, she's a, she told me she fell. That was before we hung out.
Councilman?
Yes, councilman.
First, I would like to rescind uh
Amend.
Um, no, rescind.
If you, I guess you should amend because you've already
Rescind it.
You did state it. So amend this motion.
Okay.
To rescind Council motion twenty-three dash five fifty-two.
Okay, I would like to amend this motion to rescind uh motion twenty-three dash five five two. In conjunction with motion twenty-three dash five five two of Councilman Abdul Ha and Councilman Wansel. I would move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the use of three hundred fifty-six thousand for the police department, fire department, and general government employees premium pay. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payments from the ARPA funds as follows: fifteen hundred to all full-time employees, thousand dollars to part-time seasonal employees who worked for the city during COVID time and still employed with the city as outlined in nine dash eight. Does that sound good? Three hundred fifty-six thousand.
Fifteen hundred dollars for all full-time employees that were on the list. A thousand dollars for all part-time and seasonal employees that are on the list. Anybody that worked during the time of COVID and is presently still with us. Are we okay with that? And then let me ask you one question. Do our our senior coordinators are, uh, no, well, yeah. Our senior coordinators receiving this, Josie, and I believe her name is Pat?
Pat was working.
Josie was.
Yeah, Josie wouldn't have been working then.
She's still an employee. I mean, if she was going there. But was she an employee though for the city?
Remember, we thought that.
I I believe she was a part-time employee, so um, yeah, she was part. I'm sorry, I left the
So if I make sure that Patty and Josie get it as well.
Are we changing the numbers?
Patty was or wasn't?
Was.
Patty was. Yeah, because I was there returning.
She's been there a long time.
Patty's on the list? Is Josie on the list? Let's add fifteen hundred for Josie. Is she a part-time? That's all that matters. She was part-time. You're right.
Yep.
I mean, COVID went on to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Because technically their chief of staff didn't start in twenty twenty either. Correct. They still got to be employed. I can pull up the list. What is Josie's last name?
Start with an H?
Yeah.
Is Josie or something like that?
Or something like that. Hermosy?
That was her, that was her, uh, um, that was when she became the director. She was hired as a part-time employee though. Yeah, she was a part-time employee prior to twenty twenty-two. And then we made her full-time, but she wasn't the director.
Yeah. Yeah, we fought for a year. Yeah. We were using other people. We were using other people. Until she got hired.
Josie became full-time this year, right?
She became a director this year.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four. Okay, then never mind.
Sorry, yeah, she wasn't on our list.
Was she hired?
Okay. Is the number still the same or?
Yup.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. Do you have a second?
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by, I'm going to go, who said it?
Second.
Counselor, seconded by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. Everybody's fifteen hundred dollars or a thousand dollars richer now. Thank you. Congratulations. Merry Christmas. I hope Dana got it too.
Not us. Everybody but us.
Chief of Staff Fernandez, City Engineer D, Bit Award Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, twenty twenty-four Water Main Replacement Change Order Number One, American Rescue Plan, ARPA.
Council chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind motion twenty-five dash five one four and award the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, twenty twenty-four Water Main Replacement Project Extension Change Order Number One in the amount of nine million two hundred twenty-two thousand five twenty to bid the gear contracting, bid 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 the gear contracting and one million four hundred fifty-six thousand two two fifty-five to Waitrim as authorized in motion twenty-four dash five one six and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one two two zero zero as outlined in seven dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier, I was called her Menalowski Maxwell. I had to stop for a second.
You were ready, weren't you?
Uh, any discussion on this?
Council chair, maybe, I don't know if Michelle can help us here. If we approve this, can we add something to the to this motion? That if we keep digging to see if we can use that two point five million that we approved last meeting uh for vehicles for the police, fire, and EPW somehow to take it back or?
You can keep digging all you want, but you're not going to find another eligible use if you're trying to use it for equipment.
I mean, we'll approve this. Can we add to the motion that if we somehow they're going to let it, you know, okay it, maybe we can take the money back?
I I really don't know how the motion will work um because obviously the clerk
With that effect, uh, you know, are reporting that to ARPA?
Yeah, so what you want is you want your your signed contract, you want that to use up the eligible ARPA money. So what I would recommend is to have it to take up all the rest of the ARPA money. And then if you choose to use the other, the amount some other way, then you'd have to come back before council or council would have to come back again before the thirty-first to get another signed contract to spend the money. So yeah, we know that water and sewer is an eligible expense. We know the city needs desperately water mains. It'll help your um residents' water rates because you'll have less water main breaks.
Definitely, yup.
Um, and and it's an eligible eligible use and you will be able to get a signed contract before the thirty-first, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Madam, uh, chief of staff, so this doesn't mean that that's how much we're going to spend with this company, correct? It depends like, or this is already, they gave us an estimate on all the replacement in the city? Or this is only part?
This is all the money that we are going to spend on this project. This is the remainder of our ARPA funds. I do want to point out that with the change that we just made with the premium pay, we will have to change uh the amount, lower it by forty by forty-eight thousand five hundred. That's what the difference is uh for the additional pay for the
Would you like to amend your motion, councilman?
No, no, I understand, but are this, this is going to cover all uh a city uh water main replacements?
Not all, no.
By linear feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have a large amount. I don't know if you recall seeing the map that Mr. Dib and Waitrim had presented. It has multiple dots for the past five years.
So do we know how many? Like, how much is going to, how?
Ali's is better at answering that.
Mr. Dib, are you still on? Ah, he's okay. Yeah, please, if you can unmute him. Thank you.
Mr. Dib?
Council pro temp, uh, thank you for that question. Actually, if you recall the presentation, what we presented back in November and then prior to that too. So we track the water main uh breaks in the city of Dearborn Heights for the last three years. And then we put them on the map. This is not going to solve all of our water main. We have, we have many more areas, but what we are trying to do is hit the hardest, the oldest, the the more of the the areas that are prone to constantly have water main breaks. You know, we we average about two to three times our uh neighbors in water, in the number of water main breaks. So we wanted to hit and and put a dent in the worst areas. So is that a pure all? No. You 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 don't have enough money to do to replace the entire city's water distribution.
So so on average, what's the percentage we're going to cover with this money?
Yeah, it's kind of hard. Probably about seventy percent.
Seventy percent?
And it's concentrated in the worst areas. So the best part is not just seventy percent of the city distribution. We geographically proved what areas are prone. So either the oldest, the more, the more um um rusted, severely damaged. So these are the areas we're trying to target. We're trying to make a dent in our water main breaks.
And do we have a timeframe on all this is going to be done?
All of my ARPA work must be completed by the end of twenty-six, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dib.
Council chair? Yes, sir.
The remaining ARPA money, is it restricted, unrestricted, or a combination?
Restricted.
It's all restricted.
All restricted, yeah.
Yeah, remember they put the ten million unrestricted.
Yeah.
Two point one in our budget first. Another little bit here, ten to the budget the second time. And they tried to do it the third time. We said, whoa, 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 pump your brakes. You know, they said, all right, just take the two million dollar deficit. They made us look like the bad people for not agreeing on the budget. Forget all these. I can give you a timeline too, uh, chief of staff, but you know, I made you fifteen hundred dollars happier today, so.
Richer, richer.
No, happy. We don't want to call her rich, rich. She deserves it. Everybody deserves it.
Correct. Our Parks and Recreation uh infrastructure?
No.
No.
That's a shame. We don't think we spent any ARPA money on
We didn't spend any ARPA money on anything. While LaFonia built a new civic center, while Dearborn built peace parks.
Oh, all kinds of
While everybody built something. We just put in our bank account. Don't make me go into depth of what's really happening, but you know. Probably some kudos from Sue Kaminsky, but the rest of probably like, why is Moe keep talking? So I'm going to stop.
That's a shame.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, we we, you know, take it how you want it. A hundred and fifty people on a survey out of sixty-eight thousand people. Was Vince on that survey? I wasn't on the survey. Was Angela on the survey?
I was.
I mean, I'm sure you were. I know you were.
I went to both occasions.
Council chair, you know, I I wish we, you know, I know it's too late now. It's
Three o'clock in the afternoon, councilwoman. We had work.
This what happens a lot. It's it's the eleventh hour decisions we have to make, but it's too bad that we weren't six months ago, say, you know, someone come to us and say, hey, city council, you know, we've got to spend this money. We knew that, but let's come up with a plan to
Councilman, you know how many times we've asked, what is the remaining money in ARPA funds?
How many times?
We even had a study session on it and nobody showed up. I mean, how much more can we do, man?
I mean, we, somebody dropped the ball big time on this.
Not us. I won't let this council body take the heat for it. But the reality is, you're going to take the heat if you don't spend this money the way the state tells you, the government tells you. If you don't spend it that way, then you just lost nine million dollars. Congratulations once again on on twisting our arms. Thank you. But we have a motion on the table made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Brier. And you also have to amend it for the forty-eight thousand even?
Um, sorry, forty-eight thousand five hundred. So I came up with the final number. So what we can change is that nine million two hundred and twenty-two five twenty that was in there. The new number will be nine million one hundred seventy-four zero two zero.
Zero two zero. What did we change that again?
That's the premium pay addition, the bump.
The additional money from the ARPA money that we're using to give the raises to, or not the raises, the holiday.
So we took from here to the, okay.
Yeah.
I also want to point out that the backup in this document will also need to be amended with that new amount. So um that's why I had left it a little bit vague here where it said allow the mayor and the clerk to sign the necessary documents. Just note that there's going to be that change for that dollar amount.
I I ask something for Mr. Dib.
Yes, sir.
And look, man, I'm not going to chase you on it, but I'm going to badger you on this.
What?
You're getting an additional nine million dollars, okay? Additional nine million dollars. I want updates. I want to know what's happening. We don't want to be put on the, we don't want to be thrown to the wind like everything else. I want to know what you're doing about the punch cards. I want to know what you're doing about, you know, the after the repairs are being done and the place doesn't look like pure crap because we don't send out a street sweeper to clean up the streets after we've we finish up on construction. I'm telling you right now, this job is going to be done professionally and my eyes are going to be on this. And I promise you, I'm going to continue to ask you questions, who knows, maybe once a week, once a month, once a year. You're going to be badgered on this. And I'm going to tell you right now, regardless of what everybody wants to tell us, I do not feel comfortable the way this played out. I feel like this right here, you twisted our arms, but I promise you, I am not going to stop asking you about it. It's giving me, just like I'm going to ask you about our water uh meters that were supposed to start in December, but now we're going to start in January and we're waiting to hear from this company. It's the same bullcrap. I want, I just want to start seeing stuff being done. Don't give me no excuses in this company and that company and this company. We want shit done. It's all we want. Thank you.
Council chair?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Dib, is there any uh warranty or guarantee on a on a price per linear foot for a certain amount of time? In a contract, like that's, it'll be that price for nine months or six years or whatever?
So if you sign, if we sign that contract based on these unit prices, that's all we're going to pay. For the life of the contract, I will not, I will not add unless I come, so if if, let's say, the cost of of material double, we will have to come to you for a change order, but I'm not seeing that. This is This is why we have a signed contract. We wanted to sign the contract so we can lock in those prices. That's what we're doing.
Well, basically, it's a two-year contract too.
That was my next, it's a two-year contract?
Yeah, 25, 26 needs to be spent.
That was my next question about change orders. I mean, being a linear price, do they, would they require a change order if you just charge us by a linear foot?
No, I'm talking about the cost they charge. So the way we pay contractors is with a pay request. So they submit a pay request. In that request, they will put the number of, of how many, what they did, and we hold them to the bid documents prices. So if they did 1,000 feet and it's a dollar a foot in the contract, that's all they did. If, if they did, you know, um, um, uh, cover repair and it's a $30 per cover and they did 10, we paid $30 times 10. So it is, it is managed. It's not, it's not that we hand the contractor money. And for the life of the contract, once the contractor sign up for the cost per foot, that's all he's gonna get.
So we're not guaranteed a certain amount of footage because as we've seen in the past, contractors have run into issues with boulders underground and it could be astronomical.
That's, that's, so that's the, so the boulders underground, if you recall, I came back and, and we had to issue a change order for that because it wasn't foreseen, there was a unforeseen condition. You are guaranteed a price per foot, you are. So basically, what, what, what the contractor is signing up on now is the cost per foot for pipe bursting. If you recall back in November, I explained that it is a pipe bursting process. To try to stretch, to stretch my dollars, we're, we're, we're um pipe bursting the pipes in place. So we're going to insert a pipe inside a pipe to get a new sleeve, a pipe, and so that cost is tracked. I have a bid documents which specifies how much they can charge.
That, that's, that's really wasn't my question. Thank you for giving us that information, but I would say we're not guaranteed a certain amount of linear feet being done for this amount. You can't say, okay, at $10 a linear foot and we got $10 million, we get a million linear feet because there could be all kinds of issues that they run across and that could be cut in half or even.
No, no, you are guaranteed the number. This price guarantees you a number based on the bid. What I can't guarantee is unforeseen conditions. So we come up with a, a silo in place, that's different, right? So something is in there and then it, it, it's a, it's a totally unforeseen condition. That's, but in terms of dollars per linear foot, $10 gives you 10 feet, that's what you're gonna get, 10 feet, yes. And I can get you those numbers if you want. We are guaranteed the number, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier.
I amend the motion with the number that is 9 million.
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion, Council Chair, to um make it an amount of
020.
020. Is that $20?
Yep.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Seconding that as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Administration.
Thank you.
Once again, you all fought us.
It's, it's gonna be great for the city, thank you very much.
Is that the biggest amount we're spending of ARPA money on one project or one thing?
Yes.
No, we spent.
Well, 10 million on revenue loss, but that was in one project.
Yeah, yeah, but this is, oh, this is more than 10 million.
I don't know.
This is 10, 10.2, this is 10.7.
Well, no, that, that's not all ARPA money.
It is all ARPA money.
Bye-bye, ARPA.
Next up, we have comments from council members.
Don't talk about it anymore. It's gone. Now it is gone, right? I think, right?
Comments from council members, guys, it's 9 o'clock on a, on a special meeting. Council Chair, right before the holidays, come on, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair, again. Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing me to serve another year and God bless you all.
Is Mr. Deeb on here? I got a question for him, is he still on here?
Yes, Council Chair.
All right, Mr. Deeb, you did email Mr. Faez about his presentation today, correct?
I emailed him before and, and I also was copied on the, uh, Council Protem, uh, requested the second person who missed the um, uh, presentation. So um.
I don't think it was authorized by Council Chair.
Yeah, the second one was not authorized by, by me, but the first one was authorized and everything, correct?
Right, but tonight, he wasn't on the agenda. No, I didn't send him today, no. Um, because it wasn't on the agenda.
It was on a study session.
He had a study session on here, Mr. Deeb, and you said, okay, and I, you said, welcome
I'm sorry, I didn't send it, I'm sorry, that's on me. I didn't realize that it was supposed to be, this one's on me.
Mr. Deeb, like, I mean, it seems like you got a lot on your plate.
I do have a lot on my plate, yes.
Maybe we should stop focusing on bids, maybe we should start focusing on engineering work.
You know what? This is, this has gone too far. I am not the one who sent out bids. I have told you this many times before. We have a buyer, I have never, ever advertised a bid, ever. The city has a buyer and has a department. I have never done this. I'm, enough with this accusation. I have never done bids, ever. Not once.
Mr. Deeb, Mr. Deeb, Mr. Deeb, you oversee when the bids are coming through at the end of the day. You do, you, you did with the properties.
No, 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 don't make it look, no, no, no. Listen, this is not how it works. I oversee every department manager, when the bids come in, they turn them over to the person because this is technical. I'm the one who reviews them.
You shouldn't be reviewing them though, you're too busy, you should not be reviewing them.
Wait, what do you mean I shouldn't? So, so if you're an engineering contractor, who, who do you want me to give it to to review?
The city, the city-owned properties are not, are not to be, it's not an engineering situation.
Okay, so I was asked to assist and I'm happy I'm not assisting in this anymore and I've already made it clear, this is not my specialty, okay? I was asked to assist, I, I'm not the one who prepared the, I mean.
Whoever asked you to assist failed us. Because you're telling me right now, you did not send out a meeting, I've been sitting, I've been sitting in this meeting since, since 5:30, assuming that this person didn't show up and you just told me you didn't send him an email?
Okay, so there were a lot of emails back and forth, thinking that it was gonna be the two people that missed it, and I never saw, I never, I never heard a final outcome of that, no, I didn't. So I'm sorry, I'll, I will, you know, I'll send them again.
Send what again? It's the holidays! Thank you, thank you, Mr. Deeb. Have a good day. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too.
That, that is crazy. And why is he the one in charge of that, uh, Chief of Staff? I mean, you're the Chief of Staff.
He wasn't originally.
Who was? Shouldn't have been you?
So we presented this three times, it was originally the lawyer, then there was a committee where it included Mr. Dib when we went out for the auction.
Mr. Deeb should not be on this.
After the auction.
This has nothing to do with engineering.
That's clearly noted, moving forward, we will make that.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with engineering, Mr. Deeb should not be on, on there at all.
I agree, we had originally requested a position for city-owned properties to manage those because there is currently nobody that can do that task. So I understand, there is no one in the city that can accomplish that task, I understand. Uh, but we do have a plan moving forward, we're working towards it and, and will continue to improve.
How do you forget to send an email? That's crazy.
I mean, Council Chair, to be honest, I mean, he has a lot on his plate, to be honest with you.
And, and I'm, and I'm saying.
Not, not him to be blamed, to be honest with you.
I, I don't recall seeing an email from anybody instructing him to.
There was, I'll pull it up. You, you weren't on there because you're not in communication with this.
Okay.
So, yeah, you never seen it because you're not on there because it's Mr. Deeb. It's Mr. Deeb that's been reaching out to us, it's Mr. Deeb that's been on this. Mr. De, the reality is, Mr. Deeb is doing almost every single job.
Okay, um, again.
Comments from council members?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Wonsor.
Thank you, Council Chair. In the past couple of months, uh, my nonprofit, Jamie's Kids, has branched off into a thing called Neighbor Labor, and we've raked leaves of several Dearborn Heights residents, senior citizens, veterans and disabled members. And we're going to carry it out to the winter months with snow shoveling, but snow shoveling's a little bit different. If anyone's interested in volunteering to be in part of the Neighbor Labor, get ahold of me, you can get ahold of me several ways, and we'll put you on the list of helping people out that need to help shoveling snow this winter. Also, I wanna say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone, and Happy New Year, and I guarantee you this, this New Year's gonna be a little bit different. Not a little bit different, a lot different because me, and I encourage our fellow council members to put our foot down when we say something that's binding by law and the things that we act on, uh, that don't get acted on, and the things that aren't, we're not getting updates on, we gotta start putting our foot down and demanding what we deserve instead of just sitting here and, you know, letting, hoping things will be done the right way. So I promise you that I will do my, my part and I'll do everything possible to represent the residents of Dearborn Heights. God bless everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I, I appreciate that and, and, you know, I know how hard you work, really, man, you're, you're an honest, good, uh, you know, community giver and, and father and husband. And, uh, you know, we appreciate you, we really, really do. I'll go up next. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years to everybody. Um, you know, my, my, my issue with Mr. Deeb is it's, you know, it's not his fault. Yes, he does have a lot on his plate and it sucks. It sucks that like, man, this person that we didn't bring forward is because we misspelt their email and now we failed to, to bring them here and we're sitting here like, I'm waiting, 5 o'clock, it's 5:30, you know? I said this in our last meeting, coming to these, uh, being elected official takes away a lot from your family. My son's got a fever of 102. Told my wife, hey, we're gonna give him some motion, I need to figure it out, I gotta run to this council meeting, we have a quick presentation. An extra half hour goes a long way. Uh, and it sucks, really does, it really, really sucks that like, you know, and it's, and I don't blame Mr. Deeb, it's not his fault. He's gonna be doing 50 things, should we all should, it's like he does everything. And let me tell you, he is a great asset to Dearborn Heights. Swear, he's awesome. My God, he is having to do everything and he probably thought I said like, you know, you don't need to be doing the bid process, he took it a different way. That's not how I meant it. I meant to say, don't do the bid process, don't do the bid process, don't do the IT work, don't do the building and engineering, uh, the, the building department, be the city engineer. It's all he's gotta do. Does not need to be in every single thing and I feel like we are stretching him like in so many different directions. This guy's one person with no department, no help. Lastly, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. I wish we could have ended it on a better note. I hate the fact that, uh, the way things went about today at this meeting, I don't like the way the ARPA thing went away. You know, we have no way of, of, you know, we have no way of getting anything for our Department of Public Works, we have no way of getting anything for our police and fire, we, nobody knows what's going on with our new fire station, where it's gonna be going, how it's coming, what's gonna happen. Again, we've been put out in the cold and knowing nothing that's happening. Is it gonna be on Warren, is it gonna be on the golf course, is it gonna be off Beach Daily, Coastal Joy Road? Are you gonna be able to put it in the front, you know, facing Warren? Nobody knows. Again, here we're gonna say it again at the last meeting in December of 2024, there's no communication, Chief of Staff, no, zip, zat, a zero. Don't play the victim as if, oh, no, we've been in a line of communication, there's been none. None of it. So I'm gonna echo Councilman Wonsor on this, I'm putting my foot down come January of 2025. And, and let me tell you, we put our foot down in 2024, it's just gonna, it's gonna be both feet in 2025. There's no more of just pushing us around and bullying us and lacking the communication. And I encourage all of our council members to do the same thing, because you all promised that when you ran for office, every single one of you, not to be a rubber stamper, not to come out and say, oh, well, they did this and they did that, no bullcrap. You ran on being fiscally responsible, you ran on making sure that this was a better quality of life for our residents, you ran on protecting seniors, you ran on protecting police and fire. And our fire department is still struggling with mold, has a leaking roof and doesn't have a new station when the money's been allocated over two years ago. Bullshit.
We have a grant at stake too.
I'm all done there.
Council Chair?
Councilman, go ahead.
I too would like to wish everyone a happy holiday, uh, good time with family and friends. We pay for, pray for peace uh in the coming year. I spoke with my son briefly yesterday, he's a, doing his residency uh as an emergency room physician in Madison, Wisconsin. They had um, uh, mass casualties, they had a teacher dead, a student dead, and four students critically injured. The shooter was a 15-year-old girl with a handgun. Just encourage everyone to, uh, who has guns at home to keep them locked up, keep the ammunition separate and uh hopefully we won't see another one of these school shootings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Seeing none, we'll take it to public comments?
No, take it to city officials.
Uh, comments from Administration.
Good evening, everybody. With regards to the fire station, I, I just wanna offer a quick update. So as you were aware, we just recently awarded a company that's gonna be doing the design for that, and I know that they are starting to do the site evaluations for the different sites that we have to finally choose.
What site?
Again, there's different sites, they're doing the site evaluation.
All the council doesn't know. Why doesn't the council know?
Yeah, approved at the end anyways.
What site? Offer bids?
We just allocated the, the design based on an RFQ proposal that the council approved. So again, they're gonna be starting the work as soon as we.
Can you tell us the sites? Do you know the sites?
As soon as I know them, I will let you know.
I know them, I know them.
Okay, I don't know.
The golf course behind in the back off, off of Beach Daily.
Around that area.
You do know them, we, we all know them.
So you know more than me, it's, it's around that area, right? I don't know exactly the location. Then that's the locations, we're still in the same locations, they need to do the site evaluations for all three of them. But I do have an announcement for the public and for the council. Uh, you are going to be receiving the initial notice for the citywide meter, meter replacement[1574.80] meter, meter replacement project in the next week or so. Um, so, this is just gonna be the initial letter from the company that has been awarded the task. Um, again, this is a reminder that there is no cost for the replacement, but the residents will be required to have the water meter replaced. Uh, all the installers will have identification when they show up to city properties, and they will wear uniforms, uh, travel in marked vehicles, and have completed background checks. Um, in the coming weeks, you will receive this letter that explains what I'm saying right now, as well as follow-up letters where you can sign up for, to schedule your water meter replacement. So, um, it finally happened, Mr. Chairman. We are truly replacing the water meters, and we're excited to see that. So, again, Happy Holidays for everyone. Uh, this is step one into that process.
Thank you, um... Chief of Staff, I want you to know, yes, the locations are that are being checked. The location is at the golf course on the backside of Warren, which we've been hiding from the council and the residents. And I know that you guys don't wanna say anything. And I don't, you know...
We don't know if it's a feasible location. But you can't say where it is when you don't know if it's a feasible location.
Just communicate with us. Why do you know about it? We don't. You weren't elected.
I just told you that they're doing the feasibility studies. We just awarded this not even a month ago.
Tell us. I've known about this a couple of weeks ago.
We were told a month ago that we were awarding it to do this type of study. So, I...
Go ahead, Tam.
No, Council Chair, um, I, I know, uh...
What's that, Councilwoman?
She probably directed what to say and not to say, I'm sure, but, you know, she stated that she didn't know the locations, but then she said, we're evaluating the three locations.
I don't know exactly where they are. I know a reference where they are.
I didn't, I mean, why, I mean, this should be like, can we get something, uh, we, we got a, a, a press release. The City Council got a press release from our, our, uh... Bob? Our press release person, Bob Amcraft, about a new police chief. Three days after it was out on social media, we find out. Let's, uh, direct Bob Amcraft to send, uh, make a press release about three locations.
Council, can I tell you why?
You want me to tell you? They don't like you, all right? All right, they don't like us.
Yeah.
Well, that's all right.
Well, yeah, so.
How many people put them in their job and how many people put us in our job?
Yeah.
How many voters?
I mean, there's no reason why these three sites should be made public. Or is it private money that's being used for these, the, the new fire station? Is it private money? Or is it public money?
Public money.
So, every bit of information on these fire stations should be made public immediately upon them acknowledging.
Well, I just said how many people...
The New Year. Look out. Thank you, guys. Uh, any other comments from Administration?
Do we have somebody on Zoom?
No, we'll take it to Zoom after. Uh, we have Michael McCaffrey.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday Season, uh, and let our residents know, uh, that the eighteen hundred cookie-making kits are going out this week, and we are in the process of sending them out. Uh, so be alert and, uh, make sure you keep an eye on your porch. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mike.
Merry Christmas. Anyone else in the audience here on Zoom from the Administration? Anybody? We'll move it up to public comments. Public comments. Anything in the audience? Seeing none, we'll take it to Zoom. There's actually nobody in the audience but our very own Gail. Gail has only spoken, I don't think Gail has ever spoken at our council meeting, so. Gail, do you have anything to say or no? Okay. We'll take it up to iPhone. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
And good evening. Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and to thank council for having to work with such a hard, um, job because Administration doesn't seem to recognize you and all the work you do, and they don't listen to you and they don't follow through. And Mo, for all the work you do and having to try and share these horrendous meetings with all the tension, you do a great job and there's not anyone else that could do it. So, thank you, everybody. Have a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you so much, Sue. I appreciate you. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Renee. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Hi, I'm Renee Myrna. I live on Annapolis in Dearborn Heights.
Ah, yes.
Hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, I wanna say, very nice meeting, very good meeting. You know, I'm so proud of you guys. You guys are really duking it out in there. And, um, I agree with the council that it, it might be time to take the next step in getting things accomplished in the city. It sounds like the mayor's not on board with, uh, doing what he's supposed to do, and it's time to hold him accountable, just like the ci, citizens are holding the city council accountable. Uh, should step up the ladder from there. And, uh, and Mo, I thought that was pretty slick of you getting that extra five hundred dollar bonus for you guys in there. Just slid that right in there.
Uh, I, I, I got nothing. The city council got nothing.
We got nothing. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. City council did not make any money. No elected officials made any money, uh, at all.
Yeah. Well, I was, um, it, I agree with your, your, um, decision anyway, and especially with the crossing guards and the, and the part-time workers. But you guys were really good, really good today. I'm, I'm really proud to see that you guys are really looking for information now. You're not just voting on things just because they put them in front of you, but it seems like, like there's a fire inside you guys to find out what the facts are before you vote on these things. And, um, that's very good to see. So, wanna say, you know, Happy Holidays to you guys, Merry Christmas. And I'm so, I'm so glad that I started, um, coming to these things and enjoying the meetings because, um, you know, just to see how the city works and, and to see the tough decisions that you have to make. I mean, sometimes you have to make some tough decisions that, you know, you may not wanna make, but, you know, losing, losing money for the city as opposed to making a last-minute decision, sometimes you're in a tough place, and hopefully it'll all